But we do have five minutes to kill if you want to.
Let's drag our feet just because we're not organized to sit there and look at each other.
Bad thing, Bob.
So we could take up the zoning board of appeals recommendations if you want.
Will you proceed, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, proceed.
So can we have a motion to open the meeting?
Okay, well, we'll bring through the attendance. Okay, the meeting of August 11th, 2020 will come to order. Member Grove?
Yes, sir.
Member McCamey?
Yeah.
Member Downey?
Present.
Member Joyce?
Present.
Member Baker?
Here.
Okay, and I'm present. All right, we'll take on the zoning board of appeals.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We do have seven new applications for this month. Like I did last meeting, I will read off the legal ad and then I will read the staff recommendation following that. Petition 20-11, 89 Hobart Street, Jill Mannion, applicant for relief from bylaw requirements in the Chapter 135, 402, 403, and 701 for the construction of a second story addition and front porch. The applicant seeks a finding to construct a second story addition over a non-conforming front yard setback of 18.5 feet, where 20 feet is required. The applicant also seeks a finding to construct the front porch as the applicant proposes to alter the non-conforming front yard setback from 16.6 feet to 10 and a half feet. The property is located at 89 Hobart Street, Braintree, in a zoned Residence B, as shown on assessors map, 3010, plot 65, and contains a land area of 7,109 square feet. The staff recommendation, the applicant is proposing a second story addition to the existing single-family dwelling. Staff is of the opinion the second story addition is in harmony with the existing neighborhood. Staff recommends favorable approval on the application as submitted.
Okay, does anybody have any presentation made, Grove?
No.
No.
I don't.
Okay, Member Grove, any questions, comments? Member Baker, any questions or comments?
No questions.
Member Downey, any questions or comments?
No.
Member McCamey, any questions or comments?
No questions.
Member Joyce, any questions or comments?
No questions or comments.
Okay, I have neither also. So the chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to proceed with the staff recommendations for, I don't have the address in front of me, but for the...
89 Hobart Street.
89 Hobart Street.
Okay, there's motion been made. Second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, we have to do roll call on all of these, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, I'm sorry, I apologize. Member Grove?
Yes, sir.
Member McCamey?
Yes.
Member Downey?
Yes.
Member Baker?
Yes.
Member Joyce?
Yes.
And I go yes. All right, thank you. The next matter, Connor?
Petition 20-12, 1500 Washington Street/Braxton Street, Fox Rock 1500 Campus Realty LLC, applicant for relief from bylaw requirements in the Chapter 135.
Excuse me, I have to step down from this one.
Okay.
Aaron?
Yep, I got this one.
I'll start over. Fox Rock 1500 Campus Realty LLC, applicant for relief from bylaw requirements in the Chapter 135, 407, 609, 903, and 905 for the installation of a 5.3 foot by 6 foot, 31.8 square foot ground sign. The applicant seeks a variance as the proposed ground sign is located within the Residence B watershed portion of the lot and exceeds the requirements for a ground sign in a Residence B zone. The property is located off Braxton Street at 1500 Washington Street Campus, Braintree MA, Oakton 184, in a zoned Residence B watershed and highway business watershed, as shown on assessors map, 1048, plot 74, with a land area of 5.66 acres. Staff recommendation, staff would like to note that the applicant has received relief from numerous signs within the business park. The applicant is proposing a modest sign at the corner of Braxton Street and Washington Street. The proposed ground sign will alert travelers going northbound along Washington Street. Staff recommends favorable approval on the application as submitted.
Thank you. Member McCamey, do you have any questions or comments?
No questions.
Member Downey, do you have any questions or comments?
None.
Member Baker, any questions or comments?
No questions.
Member Grove, do you have any questions or comments?
Yes, ma'am. This sign's a permanent in nature?
Yes, sir.
And it's a sign for what?
It's more so a directory ground sign. It's going to list the four addresses of that property. It's really an office campus type area. They have four separate buildings and they want to provide directional signage for travelers going northbound.
This signage can't be completed father on site rather than out on the road?
The site is somewhat set back off the main road, sir. So if you were traveling northbound along Washington Street, you will reach the intersection of Washington and Braxton. If there was no signage to alert those travelers, they'd have no idea the business park is back there.
I thought there was a sign up on that, on Braxton Street, no?
There is, but it's facing southbound, sir. So cars traveling south towards Holbrook and Randolph are alerted by that sign, but users coming north don't see the sign that's there right there.
If I may ask, Connor, do you have the ability to share a picture of what the sign looks like by any chance?
Um, yes, one second. Um. Give me one second, I'm going to... Can everyone see?
Yes, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Member Grove, I'm not sure if this helps.
Yeah. Uh. I'm just a little concerned because there's something on the other side currently.
Yes, sir, there is. It's a split sign between Fox Rock and Thayer.
Because I just had to decorate both corners with signs. If something can be combined and address both north and south.
Perhaps, Mr. Grove, would you want the recommendation to incorporate that comment to see if they could be joined with the two? Because we can't speak for the applicant for what they've already filed for.
Yeah, I know.
I can speak for the applicant.
Is it Attorney Marinelli?
Would you like me to add anything? So basically Connor has presented, Mr. Grove, what the intent is. The layout of the intersection doesn't make it possible to join anything to the sign that is on the southwesterly corner, which is the one that's very aesthetic. It's a tablet, it's, you know, it's got a stone base. It's very well designed. And that captures, as Mr. Murphy stated, that captures traffic heading north on Route 37. There is nothing to alert the driver that is coming from the south heading north. And so this is just the opposite corner by directional, just to provide safety and direction as to making a turning movement, particularly where you have to make a turning across oncoming traffic when you're coming from the south. So when you're making that left-hand turn, you really should be alerted that this is the business park. I would add that there is a sign there, kind of a black aluminum sign of some sort from, that says... That sign will be coming down. So that's coming down. This modest, like Mr. Murphy said, 31 square foot sign, really well done, will be going up in that corner in place. But there's no way to match the existing sign on the opposite corner, which captures people heading south, to in any way capture people that are heading north.
Mr. Marinelli, is it the foliage that's currently blocking the sign? Because at one time that serviced both north and south traffic.
The layout is, it's almost a right angle. You have Route 37, and then you have a perpendicular at that, Braxton Street. And on the southerly side of the perpendicular intersection, you have the sign that alerts people that are heading south towards Holbrook on Route 37. There is nothing that alerts people heading north. There's a Thayer Academy sign that will come down. So this is, this is very modest, very attractive, and very useful in terms of traveling safety, which is paramount. You want people to know where they're going. You want, you want them to be able to safely make a left-hand turn, be alerted in advance. It's not anything that is, that is distasteful in any way, quite the contrary. As Mr. Murphy stated, and I'm sure as you know, when you, when you make the turn in there, all of the buildings are set back very, very far. In that, you know, Braxton Street leads up to the first building and they're all really nestled in at the top of a slope. So there's no, there's no way of really seeing anything to alert you to which buildings or what tenants are up there, what occupants of the four buildings. And that is, that's the intent of the application. We would not, we would not want to have any kind of a condition to somehow join it with a sign that isn't going to be joinable. It just, it defies geometry to say that the sign on the south, southwesterly corner is somehow going to provide visibility to people coming from the opposite direction. You need to have this other directional sign on the opposite corner to capture the people coming the opposite way. I mean, you know, it's basically, you don't look across the expressway for direction when you're heading south. On 93, you don't look for direction somewhere in the northbound lane. I hope that answers the question, but I'm pretty sure you're familiar with the layout. And it's a perfectly reasonable request.
Thank you.
All right, I do not have any, I don't have any further comments or questions. So the chair will entertain a motion on this application for a CBA recommendation.
Take a motion that petition 2012 of 1500 Washington Street/Braxton Street be approved?
Move forward with staff recommendation. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor will do a roll call vote. Member McCamey?
Yes.
Member Downey?
Yes.
Member Baker?
Yes.
Member Grove?
No.
Was that no?
No.
Okay, and, uh, member Joyce, yes.
Member Joyce, if I may recommend, so we don't get too far behind on our public hearings, that we come back to the zoning petitions.
That time with me.
Thank you.
Need to get this spot back.
Okay, which one do we do?
We only got through two of them.
Okay, which one's first, just so I know?
We took care of 21 and we took 2012, but the first public hearing is Foddy Arnold Street.
All right.
File 20-02.
Do we need a motion to open the public hearing or do we already do that?
If I can just note, Chairman, that I am going to be recusing myself from this application.
Say again, which one is this one now?
Foddy Arnold Street.
Would you mind reading that? I don't think I have that. This is awful.
Give us one minute, Chairman.
Okay, is it Adam Street Enterprises?
Yes.
Okay, I can do that. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, may I interrupt for a minute?
Excuse me?
Can I interrupt for a minute? Did you hear Member Joyce say she is going to recuse herself from this petition?
Yes.
Okay.
Notice is given by the plaintiff board under the provisions of the Mass General Act, Chapter 48, Section 911, and the Braxton Zoning Bylaws, Chapter 135, Articles 5, 6, 7, 8, 11, and 14, that a public hearing will be conducted remotely via Zoom on Tuesday, August 11th, 2020 at 7:15 PM, and in accordance with Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 order. Said order, suspend, suspend the provision of the open meeting law to promote public health and social distancing. The public hearing will not be conducted in an open, publicly accessible place. Instead, public access to the hearing and deliberation will be achieved by adequate alternative means that allow the public to follow proceedings in a third-party communication technology that is readily accessible to the public via the internet telephone. The plaintiff board will consider a site plan review and special permit application from the applicant, Adam Street Enterprises LLC. The applicant is proposing to construct two buildings, 49,000 square feet, contracted use in 69,000 square feet warehouse manufacturing rooms, and to retain existing small office building and the garage warehouse on site. The project also includes floodplain, environmental stormwater, lighting, parking, landscape, and paving utility improvements. This site is 14.22 acres, has an address on Foddy Arnold Street, is owned commercial, and is identified as such as Plan 2008 as Part 4, 6, and 3B. Plan 3014 is Part 1C, and Plan 3013 as Part 58. Who's going to present this?
Any power?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board, my name is Brian Palmucci. I'm the attorney for Adam Street Enterprises LLC, who's seeking to redevelop and improve the area of Adam Street, which has been the site of the Graziano Cement Plant for the past many decades. And if I may, I'd like to introduce our project team who's all joining us tonight virtually. We have the principal developer is George Lang, who's actually seated right here.
Hello. Hi, how are you?
Our project engineers are Sean Hardy and Chi Man. Our LSP environmental engineer is Anthony Andronico. Our environmental restoration advisor is Garrett Tunisen. And our construction manager is David Peter. And our traffic engineer is Jeffrey Dirk and Andrew Arsenal. The plan that we're presenting to you tonight has really been a work in progress for several years now. It began as a 142-unit residential project, which we presented at a community meeting in 2016. To say the least, that plan was not well-received by area residents. We went back to the drawing board. We worked with area residents, got input from area business owners to develop the site into something that would better meet their expectations for the use of the site. We had, I can say to the board, we had a much more successful community meeting last week where our proposal, I would suggest, was received well, certainly better than it was in 2016. We're seeking a favorable site plan review, special permit to construct a first-class commercial development that we call Riverside Business Park. We seek approval to construct two commercial buildings on the site and utilize two pre-existing buildings of an approximate total on the entire site of 202,000 square feet, which would be, which would be made up of light manufacturing, office, contractor, and warehouse space on the property. The proposed construction and use of mixed commercial spaces are allowable under Braintree zoning bylaw for a commercially zoned district, and this project requires no variances. Given the size and the scope of the project, we have already submitted to peer review. I believe there is, one of the peer review experts is going to be presenting to the board later on tonight, but we've been working with the, our team has been working with their counterparts on the peer review team to make sure they have all the information so that they can best advise the board moving forward. This proposal represents a significant improvement to the property over its current condition and its use. I ask members to keep in mind that this is a very large site at 14 acres. It's triangular in shape, bordered by the MBTA Railway, the Minnadequitt River, and Arnold Street. Now, the challenge of this site has been that there currently exists ecological contamination in the form of auto shred residue known as ASR that's located in certain areas of the property. ASR is essentially auto shred residue, is what it is. It's essentially old car pieces, such as shredded-up dashboards, seats, things of that nature. At some point in time, this material was buried in several areas or a few areas around the site. This material, and I'll have Mr. Andronico speak a little bit more detail about the environmental situation there, but just by way of introduction. This material is not, does not leach into the water and it doesn't spread beyond its physical, its current physical location. Our environmental approach to this project and to that contamination is to limit the disturbance of this material as much as possible and cap it where it currently exists. Mr. Andronico will be available to answer questions tonight as well about the, our environmental mitigation plans and remediation plans. We've worked collaboratively thus far with both the Department of Environmental Protection and the Environmental Protection Agency to formulate a remediation plan that addresses the environmental challenges on the site. Now, the property, as I said, is currently zoned for commercial use. If approved, the Riverside Business Park would consist of an existing 1,300 square foot office building, an existing 12,000 square foot garage, we would use it as a warehouse, the warehouse space, the construction of a 49,800 square feet, square foot contractor space building, and the construction of a 139,000 square foot building. And if, I don't know if Mr. Hardy, our project engineer, has capabilities to share the screen, Connor, if that's something that...
Rendering.
Yeah, we have a, we have a rendering I'd like to show you.
He should be able to, if not, I believe he can request it.
It says that host disabled screen sharing.
Uh, okay, one second.
Technology making all of our lives easier.
All panelists, who can start sharing analysis, sharing all panelists. Mr. Hardy, can you try that again, please?
There we go. What you see on the screen now is the existing condition of the site. If you look towards the upper middle, you can see the MBTA railway tracks right along there. The site, and then it's bordered by Arnold Street along the right side, and then the river along the rest of the property edge. And inside there is this moonscape is the current, the current site that we're speaking of. So it's an existing 1,300 square foot office building that's already there on the site, an existing 12,000 square foot building that we would use as warehouse space that's already on the site. We'd be seeking to construct a 40, roughly 50,000 square foot contractor space building. Sean, if you could show the rendering of what that would look like. You can see the smaller U-shaped building. That would be the 50,000 square foot contractor space building. And then the larger building to the left would be 139,000 square foot building, which would house 69,500 square feet of light manufacturing space and 69,500 square feet of warehouse space. The proposed development of the site would require Arnold Street to be improved significantly to facilitate the adequate access to the, to the property. It's in pretty rough shape now. It's a dead end cut off by the railroad tracks in the back. And there's a heavy commercial use in that area from the existing buildings or existing uses off of Arnold Street. We believe that this proposal fits naturally with the existing commercial uses in that area in terms of the abutting residential uses, which there are a few along Adam Street. The, this proposal, we suggest, is a vast improvement over the previous cement plant operation at the site. As a result of, should this project be approved, the result would be a significant reduction in off-site impacts from noise, odor, smoke, dust, vibration, and glare. All of these, all of the activities on the site would be conducted indoors compared to all of the outdoor activity that has historically taken place there, much to the chagrin and frustration of area residential neighbors. The fully built business park will see an increase of car trips in and out each day, but does not exceed the 15% volume increase over current car trips. We have several ways that we believe we can mitigate that impact of the additional car trips, most notably to improve the signals at Elm Street, at Middle Street, and Elm Street at Adams and Hawthorne Road. We propose to develop two optimized signal timing and phasing plans for the AM and the PM peak periods. The lights that operate there currently are one phase only, which doesn't take into account the volume and direction of traffic. At this point, if I could, I'd like to turn it over to Andrew Arsenal, again, our traffic engineer from Vanessa and Associates, to just speak in a little bit more detail about the traffic analysis and the impact that this, this project would have on the area. Andrew?
Thank, thank you, Brian. Thank you, Brian, and good evening. I'm Andrew Arsenal from Vanessa and Associates, and we perform the transportation impact assessment for the Riverside Business Park. Tonight, I'm going to walk through that report and present an overview of it. We prepared the report in consultation with the town and in accordance with the Mass DOT standards. Some of the key findings that we were, we found were that we were estimating traffic volumes that would fall below the maximum allowable traffic volume increase in the town of Braintree zoning bylaws. We do not anticipate a significant increase to motor delays within the study area, and we did not observe any significant high crash locations within the study area. Lastly, we found that there was enough sightline visibility at the proposed driveway locations to allow safe operation, excuse me, with the trimming and vegetation, trimming of the vegetation currently down there. As Brian mentioned, here's an overlay of the site and the study area. We have the commuter rail to the south, Route 3 over to the west, Moore's School to the northwest, and Adams Playground out to the east. The schematic that we came up with shows the existing sidewalks, crosswalks, traffic signals, and lane widths within the study area. As shown, we have a sidewalk along at least one side of all the study area roadways, with the exception of Arnold Street, marked crosswalks at all of the signalized intersections, and we generally have 11-foot-wide travel lanes. There's also that mid-block crosswalk on Adam Street, just west of Commercial Street, that leads to the Adams Playground. Excuse me. As far as the trip generation, we use the standard Institute of Transportation Engineers models to estimate the amount of trips associated with the proposed development. These numbers represent all the vehicles associated with these land uses, including passenger cars and truck volumes. As you can see, on a typical weekday, we're estimating around 160 to 180 vehicles accessing the site during the peak. the site during the peak hours. This does not consider the existing volumes generated by the concrete plant, which would be removed to construct the development. And additionally, based on some peer review comments that we, we went back and we estimated the volume of simply the trucks that would be accessing this site. Again, we base this on the ITE models, and we found that about five trucks would access the site during the peak hours. So the bulk of the site traffic would consist of passenger cars, SUVs, pickup trucks, and panel vans, something like a Ford Transit. This is our estimated trip distribution, which we based on the existing travel patterns within the roadway network and the overall roadway network and its external connections. As you can see, we estimate about three-quarters of the traffic will leave the site to the west primarily to access Route 3, I-93, and 95. Excuse me. Finally, I just want to walk through our recommendations for the site and the study area. For the site, we have fairly common recommendations that I would expect to find at any development. Internal driveways should be about 24 feet wide just to accommodate emergency vehicles, but also to provide a buffer for backing vehicles. There should be stop signs and stop bars at any of the site driveways, and all the signs should be up to the latest current standards. As I mentioned, all the existing vegetation should be trimmed back, if not removed entirely, just to increase those sightlines. As far as recommendations specific to this development, there should be a sidewalk provided along Arnold Street with ADA-compliant wheelchair ramps and a marked pedestrian crossing linking the development site to Adams Street and the external roadway network. As far as off-street, off-site improvements, as Brian mentioned, the two signalized intersections of Elm Street at Middle Street and Elm at Old Elm, Adams and Hawthorne Road should get some updated equipment and optimized traffic signal timings, phasings, and coordination plans. Additionally, we should investigate either geometric or signage improvement at the Adams Street at Commercial Street intersection. Operationally, it would make a lot more sense to remove the northbound stop sign on Commercial Street. Now, in coordination with the proposed utility work that's planned along Commercial Street, there may be some options. We could maybe bump out the curbs along, along Adams Street that would reduce the speed for the northbound left-turning vehicles, and it would also maybe allow us to relocate that mid-block crossing closer to the intersection, have it be less of a surprise factor for And lastly, we would recommend the development of a transportation demand management program to try and eliminate some of the single motorist vehicle-based trips associated with the site. I listed a brief framework of some of the items that would typically be included here, which is taken from the report itself. With that, I'd like to turn back to Brian to facilitate any questions.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, we also have with us tonight the town's peer reviewer for the traffic, and I think this would be a good opportunity. We have a number of issues with this application. I'm not sure that we could get to all of them this evening, but if we focus on the traffic discussion, I think it would be good to have a peer reviewer from Beta make a presentation if they could speak to the application.
Okay, if they could.
That would be Mr. Lucas and Mr. Paradas.
So, by way of introduction, my name is Phil Paradas with Beta Group. We have done a number of reviews for specific aspects of the project. With me today is Tyler DeRuda, DeRuda from Beta as well. He did the primary review of the, of the work, and he can comment on the review at this time.
Thanks, Phil. Hi, Mr. Chair. For the record, I'm Tyler DeRuda with Beta Group. Greg and I had done the traffic peer review for this particular site. We submitted several comments in a letter dated July 1st, 2020, primarily kind of some minor issues that can be resolved, we believe, with some response to comments. The key things that we pointed out were regards to the truck traffic. As you heard the applicant state in their presentation, one of the comments was to discuss the number of added truck traffic and how the added trucks would impact the area network. Based on their presentation, they've done some estimates as to the number of trucks, but we'd like to review their response as to any potential impacts to signals or the roadway network. Regarding site distance, when we went out and checked in the field, while it's not the site driveway, the intersection of Arnold at Adams, Adams, yes, there's some vegetation and some obstruction on the corner, so we're recommending the applicant coordinate with the town to kind of clear up as much of that as they can to make that looking, I think it's looking right, to the right is the hardest, the hardest look there. And then with respect to the removal of the stop sign at Commercial, we're recommending that if that was to occur, to do the geometric improvements first or do some kind of a trial. While it might, or while it will improve the capacity to remove the stop sign, there's a lot of left turns there, and so from a safety standpoint, we'd want to do that sort of in a staged, or do the geometric improvements first to help slow the speeds of the left turns down. Those are pretty much the key issues. We'd be happy to take additional questions.
Well, why don't we hold the questions? See, Mr. Palmucci has anything further to say?
Thanks.
Thank you. Yes, I will let the, let the board know that we will respond to the peer review reports that we've received. We've been working through them. I think traffic's ready to go. We wanted to meet with you folks tonight to see if there was anything else that we needed to do to be responsive to our book of peer review as well as the board. So those, the, the peer review responses will be forthcoming after tonight's meeting with our counterparts at Beta. I, if I could, the, the only other thing I would like to discuss in any bit of detail is the environmental overview of the site. And if I could have Mr. Andronico just give you a brief overview of both the environmental contamination of the site and our remediation plans for the site.
Sure. The, as Mr. Palmucci alluded, the site was filled back in the 60s with a pretty significant volume of auto shredder residue that's generated by, you know, shredding cars and magnetically removing the metal for reclamation, and the residue was just what's left over. It's a fairly substantial volume of material that was deposited during this timeframe along the banks of the Manadequitt River primarily, somewhere on the order of, of, just to make sure I got this volume right, over 20,000 or 15,000 to 20,000 cubic yards of material. So it's because of the characteristics, it has PCBs and heavy metals. Because of the characteristics, full removal of all this material would cost $12 million. It's just not feasible, so this material is going to have to remain on site. And the best thing we could do is, as part of this redevelopment work, is manage it appropriately so that there's, we reduce the potential for it to migrate into the river and also reduce the potential for direct exposure. And so our plan is to perform some soil removal along the banks of the river where the material exists, relocate some material from the northeast area where there's some impacts in the backyard of the residence and where the proposed river infiltration area is going to be located, and relocate that material to the eastern portion of the site as part of the regrading, and then cap the materials with either three feet of soil in areas that will be unpaved with pavement and other portions, and part of the material would be under one of the large warehouse building in the back of the site. The building itself will have a sub-slab vent system based on comments we received from EPA. We've had preliminary discussions with both DEP and EPA. They've reviewed our plan. We do not yet have formal approval, but we expect that in the next couple of weeks. We've been working with them and have developed this plan in concert with the comments that they provided with us. As the material is excavated and moved, we'll be performing air monitoring, we'll be performing dust suppression, and ultimately, when it's relocated and capped, it'll actually stabilize it and improve the conditions environmentally. So that's kind of a broad-based overview of, of how things would look. Ultimately, it would be a deed restriction to make sure that the buried material does not get disturbed, or if it must be disturbed in an emergency, it's done so in an environmentally responsible manner. And with that, I'll leave it over to any, any questions?
I'm going to hold off on questions now. First, let Mr. Palmucci finish his presentation.
You're on mute, Mr. Palmucci.
That was the best 30 seconds of a presentation I've ever given.
That was incredible what we did here.
I just wanted to say, in conclusion, this is a very large site at 14 acres, and it's been a very challenging site to, to attempt to redevelop, given the environmental contamination areas, because there, there, there are several areas that are positioned non-strategically throughout the site that have made it challenges, challenging. But overall, we believe that this would be an improvement to the town of Braintree and would reap benefits for the town of Braintree moving forward. So at this point, I'd, I'd be happy to interact, to entertain any questions from the board or, or any of our team members would as well. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members.
Well, thank you, Mr. Palmucci. What I'd like to do is open it up to the public first, have any, any comments or questions. Christine, has anybody raised a hand?
I'm going to turn that over to Connor. Can you, you're on mute, Connor.
Sorry about that. We have two hands raised. One is Councilor Sasha. I will allow him to talk.
Thank you, members of the planning board, for letting me speak. I'm the District 2 Town Counselor. This project is in my district. To echo what Attorney Palmucci said, we had a meeting, and unfortunately, there was also a school board meeting that night, so turnout was pretty low. But there was one concern that I did want to raise tonight because the discussion is about traffic, and that was regarding the potential or the possibility of eliminating that stop sign at Adams and Commercial. There was some resident feedback on that one issue, and it had nothing to do with, with turning left or right. It was really about pedestrian safety. There have been issues at that intersection, so I would just ask that as this project moves on, if any consideration is going to be given to removing that stop sign, maybe a public meeting could be held with somebody from DPW and go over other options for addressing pedestrian safety, because I don't think that it necessarily has to be a stop sign there. It could be flashing crosswalks or something like that, but, but I think people feel very strongly about making sure that everyone can adequately get across that intersection. Thank you.
Christine, anybody else? You're on mute, Christine.
We have Robert Kearns next. I will allow him to speak just one second, please. Mr. Kearns, go ahead.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, thank you. Of the opportunity to speak, with, with respect to the PCB and the other contaminants in the bank of the river, so the plan is to remove those from the bank and put them somewhere else on site, is that correct?
That is correct, yeah.
And cap that, okay. And then in some of the old plans, I saw that there was going to be like a trail along the river. Is that still a thing with, with, as there is contamination there, as it's going to be removed, and then, or is that plan still happening or not?
There, there will still be a trail. The, the environmental remediation will happen first, so we'll pull back impacted material from the riverbanks, we'll install a three-foot cap to kind of enclose it in, and then the construction of the, you know, the restoration of the bank itself, the planting and the, the riverwalk itself would be up above that.
The plan is, Mr. Kearns, the plan is currently, and I feel to address that, but the plan is to, to create a river, a riverwalk along the Manadequitt River to give the public access to, to that natural area, and that would cover about, I would say, maybe 80% of the site. There'd be a walking path along that's accessible as well as parking for the public to, to enjoy that area. So that is still very much a part of the plan.
Oh, that's nice. The other, the other question I had is, you done any soil sampling underwater in the river to make sure that none of this has migrated into the sediments of the river? I know, like in the, in the dam removal project for the Armstrong, again, they had to do a bunch of sediment sampling in the river, and they're going to do some man of that sediment in the river, but I don't know if it's migrated or eroded away over time. Have you investigated that at all?
We have investigated that. We do see impacts in the river, primarily to the east. There is a stretch where we will be doing some sediment removal down below the high-water mark on the edge of the bank. As you get more into the center of the river itself, it's more rocky material and coarse-grain material. The finer material gets, kind of gets washed down, so there's not a lot of, of actual underwater remediation we're going to be doing, just a small strip along eastern portion where we did, we did observe impacts there.
Okay, that's good. It's just a concern because people do kayak it. I amend, you know, this concerns of that, so that, that is good to hear. Thank you.
Connor, any other comments, questions?
Um, no, I don't see anyone else with their hands raised, and there's nothing in the chat, so.
Okay. If anybody, I'm not sure the board wants to ask some questions now, or they want to wait till the next meeting so they can digest what was heard, what was presented. I'm going to leave it up to the board if they want to continue this matter till September or, or ask questions now, we're still going to continue it or ask questions now. The feelings of the board would be what? Okay, so I guess we have a lot to digest here, so why don't we do this? I'll take a motion to continue this till the next hearing so we can digest everything that was told to us. Get updated on the traffic situation and get updated with any questions there for us to come back in September. Is that okay with the board?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, our next meeting is September 8th.
Okay, so then there'll be a motion to, children, a motion to continue this matter till September 8th by roll call. Memma Grove?
Yes, sir.
Memma Kami?
Yes.
Memma Downey?
Yes.
Memma Baker?
Yes.
And myself, yes. All right, thank you very much. Thank you, Attorney.
Thank you very much. Good evening.
Yeah, Palmucci, yes. Any, what's the next matter?
Mr. Chairman, if we can just take a, a two-minute little recess, Memba Macami wants to try to reprogram his computer, but the next item up will be 297 Quincy Ave Super Petroleum, and I believe Attorney Marinelli is still with us. He's representing the applicant.
Okay, so we'll just take a two-minute break?
If we could just for, to let him reboot.
I'm going to call Erin, just have her come back. I'm number Joyce.
She's with us.
She is? Okay.
Just so you guys know, actually, never mind. Sorry, disregard that.
Well, now we don't know, do we? They're telling us.
He informs me he's rebooting.
Okay.
We see you, Mr. McCauley.
Okay, thank you. Sorry about that.
Thank you.
I didn't hear you. I'm just kidding.
Mr. Baker, you're still with us?
Yes, I am.
Okay, we just need your video on, please.
Yep.
All right, the next public meeting is notices given by the planning board on the provision of Master of Law, Chapter 48, Section 911, and the Braintree zoning bylaws, 135, Articles 5, 6, 7, 8, 11, and 14, that a public hearing will be conducted remotely via Zoom on Tuesday, August 11, 2020, at 7:15 p.m. in accordance with Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 order. Said order suspending the provisions of the open meeting law to promote public health and social distancing. The public hearing will not be conducted in an openly publicly accessible place. Instead, public access to the hearing and deliberation will be achieved by adequate alternative means that allow the public to follow the proceed in a third-party communication technology that is readily accessible to the public via the internet and telephone. On that day, the planning board will consider a major modification to Plan B, Special Permit Site Review Decision 03-04, previously granted in 2015. The applicant, Super Petroleum Inc., is proposing to construct a 252-square-foot addition to the existing building and further request permission to utilize 1,134 square feet of the expanded building for the convenience store with a 400-square-foot area dedicated to the separate coffee pastry operation as accessory to the gas convenience store use. The project also includes landscape and parking modifications. This property is 26,000 feet per square feet, has an address of 297 Quincy Ave. Its own general business and highway business is identified as such as Plan 3044, is plot two. Mr. Marinelli?
Good evening. Hello?
Hello? Yep.
Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, yeah.
Good evening. Members of the planning board, Frank Marinelli, and I'm pleased to appear on behalf of Super Petroleum and its owner, Mike Bugazia. Just by way of background, Mr. Bugazia immigrated to the United States from Libya and studied business administration, Texas A&amp;M. And after his graduation, he worked in the industry, eventually starting his own business in 1996. And over the past 24 years, his company, Super Petroleum, grew to approximately 30. Can you hear me okay?
Hey, you're breaking up a bit.
Yeah, I don't. His company grew to approximately 30 locations. Its wholesale entity supplies fuel to an additional 10 locations. Super Petroleum is one of the leading independent fuel retailers in Massachusetts with sales revenue of over $100 million per year and employing 100 people at its locations approximately and its offices. In Braintree, Super Petroleum purchased the former Parlee Gas Station at 297 Quincy Avenue, and in 2003, invested in redevelopment of that business-owned site. The application before you tonight is a proposed modification and improvement of the convenience store component of the existing use. The existing building is approximately 1,534 square feet. The proposed addition just basically squares off the building. As you can see from the site plan, there's an indentation basically in the northeast corner, and this just squares off the building. It's about 252 square feet, a very small addition. It was approved in 2010. It was approved again in 2015. It wasn't constructed due to other company priorities with the various stations that Mike owns and manages under Super Petroleum. It is a convenience store currently with gas, very common in the industry. It's what you see everywhere. And this is just another opportunity to upgrade, modernize the convenience store portion of the existing use in order to remain competitive. The 252-square-foot addition, as I said, was approved previously, and we're just looking to basically renew that approval, which the last time was 2015. We would expect to construct the addition in early 2021. The only other part of this application that hasn't been considered previously is that the 2015 decision required approval from the planning board should the applicant want to lease a portion of the retail area to a separate vendor. The applicant requests such approval in case the applicant identifies a separate vendor for the small accessory coffee pastry section of the convenience store, which is shown on the floor plan. It's only about 400 square feet. So that is the application, Mr. Chairman. We're happy to answer any questions. All of the department head recommendations were favorable. The draft conditions are attached to the staff report. We've reviewed them. They are acceptable to Mr. Bugazia. There's been no issues at the site over the past 15 years of operation. It's really been a seamless operation serving the community. So we're happy to answer any questions.
Well, first, before we answer any questions, I'd like to open up, any hands up, Connor?
I don't see any. There's eight attendees in there. I don't, I don't see a hand raised, no.
Okay. So I'll open it up to the board first. Member Grove?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Member Baker?
No questions.
Okay. Member Downey?
I have no questions.
McCauley?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Marinelli, when this? The other modification came through. I'm just looking at the charts here. So you're going to change the parking in the back? Is that, am I correct about that?
The parking was reconfigured, but there's the same amount, eight parking spaces required and eight provided.
Okay. But that's, that's not part of, is that part of a change here? I remember we had an original parking plan. So is that going to be restripped or reconfigured?
I have the revised plans that were asked, requested by staff were submitted, and I haven't seen them myself, Mr. McCauley, but I don't think there's anything material in terms of parking and so forth. Everything that's required under the bylaws is provided.
Okay. I don't have any other questions. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Joyce, any questions?
Just a point of clarification to Mr. Bugazia. He was a former client of mine years ago, in 2013. Just wanted that to be out in the open.
Okay, thank you. Member Joyce, any questions or comments?
No question or comment.
Hello? It's dead froze. Member Joyce, questions, comments?
No questions or any comments.
I have none. What's the departments?
So, Mr. Chairman, this is Melissa Santucci-Rozzi's petition. She provided you with a staff report and draft conditions. And with the exception of some minor input into those draft conditions of some new revision dates and maybe some renumbering or grammar, I feel that she was confident that the project was ready for action by the board tonight.
Yep. All right, I don't disagree with that. All right, that's what I'm making sure. One more call for any comments for the public, Connor?
I don't see any hands raised. There's nothing in the chat either.
Okay. There's a, Chair will attend a motion to approve all correspondence that have been entered into the record. Is there a motion?
Still moved.
Second? Okay. Okay, roll call vote. Member Grove?
Yes.
Member Kami?
Yes.
For Baker?
Yes, sir.
Member Downey?
Yes.
Member Joyce?
Yeah.
And I vote yes, too. Okay. Chair will attend a motion to close a public hearing?
Still moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Roll call vote. Member Grove?
Yes.
Member McCauley?
Yes.
Member Baker?
Yes.
Member Downey?
Yes.
Member Joyce?
Yeah.
Myself. Okay. So the public hearing has been closed. So at this point, the chair will attend a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move for a positive vote for the major modification, special permit, site plan review, number 03-04, 295, 297 Quincy Avenue.
Is that what the conditions has written?
Yeah, yes. Sorry, yes.
Based on that, is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Okay. Roll call vote. Member Grove?
Yes.
Member McCauley?
Yes.
Member Baker?
Yes.
Member Downey?
Yes.
Member Joyce?
Yeah.
I also vote yes. All right, thank you, Attorney Marinelli. Thank you very much.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, the next matter up is Citgo Petroleum. This is a new public hearing for 345, 395 Quincy Avenue. The applicants are with us. We need the legal advertisement read into the record.
Let me just look for that one. Okay. The Braintree Planning Board hereby, in notice pursuant to Master of Law 41, Section 81, and under the Braintree Rules and Regulations for the subdivision of land 2002 that a remote virtual public hearing in accordance with Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 order, open meeting law, shall be conducted on Tuesday, August 11, 2020, at 7:15 p.m. Public hearing will not be conducted in an openly publicly accessible place. Instead, public access to the hearing and deliberation will be achieved by adequate alternative means that allow the public to follow the proceed in a third-party communication technology that is readily accessible to the public via the internet and the telephone. The planning board will consider definitive plan application from the applicant, Citgo Petroleum Corporation, to construct a 50-foot-wide dead-end road layout extending from Quincy Avenue for distances of 230 feet and length at 120 feet diameter cul-de-sac. The proposed roadway will create legal frontage for the proposed Lot B, 54,077 square feet, with 111,46 feet of frontage. Remaining land area proposed Lot A will be approximately 2,589, oh, I'm sorry. It's 2,589,154 feet in lot size of 59.44 acres and lot size with 1,083 linear feet of frontage of Quincy Avenue. Review of the definitive subdivision application includes, but no limited to, all related utilities, grade, drainage road, and sidewalk construction, et cetera, as it all pertains to approval of the subdivision. The property is located at 345, 395 Quincy Avenue within a highway business district as identified as such as Plan 3045, Plot 1. Okay, who's presenting on their behalf?
I am, Mr. Chairman. My name is Joe Callahan. Can you hear me and see me well?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Callahan, do you have a diagram? Or could you share with us the plan?
I can see if I could share it with you.
Okay, well, Connor will provide access to you.
Should be able to view it, Joe. Let me know if you can.
Okay, sorry. What should I do here, Connor? I'm sorry.
So if you have the window completely open, it'll say share screen at the bottom.
Yeah.
Click that.
Okay.
You can choose which window.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Joe Callahan. I'm a senior project manager for environmental strategies and management. And I'm here on behalf of the Citgo Petroleum Corporation for the proposed Citgo development at 345, 395 Quincy Ave. I have with me this evening on behalf of Citgo lawyers, Michael Leon and Valerie Moore of Nana McLennan and Fish, and Jeff Plant and Roy Messier, who are environmental strategy management engineers. The proposed definitive subdivision plan creates a new Lot B out of the larger Citgo Terminal Lot A that covers the existing storage tank, referred to as Number Two area, with a new road entering from Quincy Ave. But the proposed road is conceived only as a paper road, and the intent is that road will never be built. The purpose of the subdivision plan is to create a separate legal lot that will allow Citgo more flexibility to enter into longer-term administrative and financing lease agreements with other fuel companies. The storage tank will always remain a storage tank and continue to be used as it always has for the storage of petroleum. And the storage tank will remain integral to the operations of the terminal, meaning all access to the tank will remain from with the present confines of the Citgo Terminal. As part of the definitive subdivision plan application, we are requesting a number of waivers to the planning board's rules and regulations governing the subdivision of land as noted in the application. I'd be happy to read them off if you want to. They're all pertaining to the road and the fact that the road will never be built. Mr. Chairman, would you like me to read?
Please.
Okay. Section 5, definitive plan submission requirements. Drainage calculations. We're requesting a waiver for drainage calculations since no changes to the proposed new lot will be made. The lot as stated will remain unchanged and integrated with terminal drainage. There will be no change to its existing drainage conditions. Projection of school enrollment. We are requesting a waiver for school enrollment projection since the subdivision will not be built and therefore not is applicable. Plans miscellaneous. We're requesting a waiver of the one- and two-foot topographic contours on the subdivision, given that no changes to the existing topography are proposed. The proposed Lot B will remain unchanged and will remain as part of the Citgo Terminal property. Based on staff recommendation of proposed lot in the immediate existing areas outside the proposed new Lot B, which encompasses Tank Number Two, we're surveyed and topography is represented on Plan C4. We're requesting waiver of subsurface conditions since no stormwater or sewage disposal systems are planned and the subdivision will remain unchanged. We are requesting a waiver of all profile plan requirements since no changes to the existing surface areas are planned. The proposed street will be on paper only. Stormwater will remain connected to the existing terminal storm drainage system. And the Tank Two on Lot B will remain unchanged. Requesting waivers of all proposed storm drainage and utility plant, utility requirements. There's no changes to the existing stormwater management system and utilities are proposed. The proposed new lot will remain connected to the existing terminal system. Erosion and stormwater runoff control plan. We're requesting waiver for erosion and stormwater runoff control plan since the subdivision will not be constructed, and the new lot will remain unchanged. And I did submit the proposed And um, I did submit the proposed covenant to staff today. I know you don't have a copy of that uh, right now, but we're uh, we're proposing a covenant, a mechanism so that, you know, ensures that the uh, the uh, road won't be, won't be built.
I just wanna say thank you for reading those out, I just, the public's out there, so I want to make sure they, they heard everything, so.
Sure, I understand, yeah.
Just so nobody can say that they didn't know.
And again, this is just for flexibility for future financing and, and purposes for Citgo.
Yes.
Um, they already lease, they have leasing agreements with the other fuel, fuel companies part of the terminal, but this allows them more flexibility to entertain a longer term uh, lease agreement plus maintaining security interest. No intent to ever uh, sell the, sell the lot, um, unless the entire terminal gets sold as a whole, so. Thank you for allowing me that presentation.
Thank, thank you for presenting that. So, uh, so I'm gonna leave it up to the board right now, first of all, is any public, Connor, anybody in the public wanna speak?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, before the public speaks, can I give you an update on a couple of items?
Absolutely, please.
Um, so, as Mr. Callahan said, he sent the covenant in today, we have sent it upstairs to the legal department for um, recommendation and referral um, to have it back to you for the next meeting. We anticipate this will need to be continued.
Yes.
In addition, we will be, um, we have now a new town engineer that has come on board, he's been on board for about a week and a half. Um, we will be getting recommendations from him as to the waivers as well as staff for the next meeting as well, so we don't have those tonight for you. But um, as you recall, when we did the preliminary plan for this project, we expressed our concerns um, as a board and a department over the um, future building, build-out of the subdivision and how that would be handled. So, I've given that direction to the um, legal department with that idea that you have concerns that if it were to be approved, how can we be guaranteed that with all the um, future activities?
Yep. Alright. Alright, thank you, thank you, Mr. Connor, is there anybody making any comments?
Yes, um, Robert Kearns has his hand raised, I'm going to... Mr. Kearns, are you able to talk?
Do you hear me?
Yes.
Oh. Hi, um, Robert Kearns here. Um, one concern I had was with respect to the driveway being perpendicular to the um, entrance to the terminal for all the trucks, so obviously with the covenant, if it's up to snuff legally, then that wouldn't be a problem. Um, one other question I had that wasn't answered um, is who are they proposing to lease this tank to? And could the covenant include a provision that nothing else other than gasoline could be stored in the tank as markets change? Uh, other things could potentially be stored in the tank, and I know that's concerned some other members of the, of the neighborhood and the community are concerned about is um, other uses of the tank for storage or just other uses of the lot in the industrial area. Um, and I think some other people want to speak, I know, uh, and I'm, I'll yield my time to Mike Lang if he's on the call, or Alice Arena, or any others who would like to speak. Um, they may have trouble doing the raised hand feature.
Mr. Kearns, if, if I may interrupt, could you state your address just for the record, please?
Two hundred Pilgrim Road.
Two hundred Pilgrim Road, thank you. Um, Mr. Chairman, we have one more hand raised, it is Mr. Mike Lang, I will allow him to talk.
Hello?
Can you hear me?
Yep, can you speak? Yep, we hear you.
Okay, uh, my name is Mike Lang, I'm the environmental coordinator for the East Brantree Civic Association. And for fifty years, we've been working with Citgo on a number of different issues. And we'd like to continue doing that. Uh, when I first saw this diagram, my big concern was exactly what Robert was saying. The um, the driveway, that road that they're proposing, um, actually goes, first of all, it goes off Quincy Ave and it's um, it goes down a little hill, but it, it immediately comes to on the point where the oil tank is aligned up to fill up their, their tanks. So, that the um, the road can't, absolutely can't go in down there. Now, my thinking is that if, if, if you permit it and it's actually on the drawing, then eventually they can come back later and build a boom. And you just can't, it's just too damn dangerous. Um, the other concern I have, Robert took most of my questions. Um, anyway, is that we're concerned about what will go in the tank. And I don't know if they're limited to um, putting gasoline into it or oil, heating oil, whatever it is. But I talked to Jim Casey, and I guess Jim Casey is head of, um, see if I got the commission right, he's a licensing committee or something to that effect, which um, which has control of volatile chemicals that are stored. And I asked him about what he knew about it, and he said that that was the first he had heard about it. And I think that Citgo first has to get things straightened out with the town as far as um, storage capacities, permit capacities. Does this tank take away from your capacity? And uh, what does that do to other, other people utilizing this site? Um, anyway, th- those are my major concerns here. Um, the other thing is, I know that Beld has, Beld use a lot, utilizes a tank that's on-site there. So, I, I don't understand why they have to have frontage and they, they can't go the same route that Beld makes, like just um, obviously, if you're putting gasoline in there, they, they're gonna have to go to the fill station, you know, just down the road a piece. Um, so, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm just wondering why you can't just add some plumbing to, to the tank and accomplish what you're trying to accomplish. Uh, Mr. Callahan, Callahan had mentioned that other, other parties have tanks on-site or they utilize the site. Um, why does this need a roadway? Why does this have to be a subdivision?
The applicant wanna hear some of that, or?
Yeah, let uh, Mike Leon chime in on this one, he's a lawyer for uh, Citgo.
Good evening, good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Uh, my name is Michael Leon from Nutter McLennan and Fish. Um, I've appeared before this board previously, including at the time when we, the preliminary plan was approved last, last year. Um, I'm happy to respond to a number of the questions that are, have been raised by Mr. Lang and, and Mr. Kearns on this issue. As, as Mr. Callahan explained, and I, I think I discussed this last year when we talked about this in connection with the preliminary subdivision plan, this is a very um, uh, I'll call it a technical subdivision plan filing, we're really doing this to create a legal lot um, that we have um, the ability to use as a separate standalone lot. However, as Mr. Callahan said, um, it is clearly, and, and I'll say, um, without any conditions, um, our intention to maintain this lot as an integral part of the Citgo Terminal. The, we have no intention of building the subdivision roadway, we just wanna create a separate legal lot that can actually be treated as a standalone lot to the extent that it's necessary for any kind of long-term financing of any inventory in the pro, in the tank. Let me, let me try to answer some of these questions, and it's, as I said, starting with the, with the fact that um, we clearly appreciate the fact that, given the location of this, of the cul-de-sac, the subdivision roadway that's shown there, it's shown for very specific purposes, and I think I explained this in the, during the preliminary subdivision plan hearing. Um, our intention was to create a subdivision plan that actually satisfied all of the conditions of Braintree zoning um, requirements, including lot, uh, the, the lot size, the um, frontage requirements, and not to create any new non-conformities. So, we were able to identify a location for the subdivision roadway that ends in the cul-de-sac, that actually remains far enough away from all structures on Quincy Avenue and any other structures on the balance of lot A that um, were, were able to ensure that we did not create a new setback non-conformity. Uh, instead, making sure that we met the setback frontage lot area requirements without a request for a waiver or variance, and that's why we located the roadway where we did. But as I indicated, we do not intend to actually make the improvements to this plan. We simply wanna ma- make, we wanna ensure that we have a separate lot created for recording purposes at the registry of deeds. Now, with respect to what's in that tank and what will be in the tank, the uh, and, and the flammable storage permit that carried for the Citgo Terminal, which I have um, managed over the last twenty-five or thirty years with the town. Um, this has no impact on the flammable storage permit, the lot will remain owned by Citgo Petroleum and remains part of the terminal. I wanna call the planning board's attention to a small lot on Quincy Avenue, identified as lot eleven on the plan, it's about a five thousand square foot lot, separately created decades ago, that remains part of the Citgo Terminal. Um, yet it stands alone as a separate lot, and, and what we're really doing tonight is something very similar to that. It will remain part of the terminal, but it will be identified as a separate parcel for purposes of, of recorded plan, and that's effectively what it's all about. The, the terminal stores effectively petroleum products, which, which are comprised of of distillates or heating oil, which is both transportation-grade diesel and heating oil products, and gasoline, uh, various grades of gasoline. Um, there's also some um, ethanol that's stored there for blending purposes, because as I, I'm sure you recall, um, you're aware of the fact the federal government requires that um, our gasoline products are blended with ethanol um, to various percentages in accordance with. Um, but other than that, um, that's all that we store there, that's all that will remain stored in this tank as well as all the rest of the tanks out there, and it, though it does not affect the flammable storage license that's held by Citgo for all the property um, which it owns. With regard to the Braintree Electric Light Facility, and I, I recognize that there were some questions about it earlier, and this goes back a long way. Um, a substantial portion of the Braintree Electric Light Department parcel was originally part of the Citgo Terminal. In fact, in the nineteen fifties, when that parcel was um, separated and acquired by the town of Braintree, um, I believe that one or two large petroleum tanks were uh, included in that sale, and Braintree Electric until it converted to natural gas actually had a oil-fired um, power facility, generating facility at the pot station. Those are obviously long, since been replaced with combined cycle gas facilities there. But at this point, we do not sell, we do not store or connect with uh, and interact with anything for Braintree Light. Um, so, we're not gonna be changing the content, we're not gonna be changing the management, as Mr. Callahan said, certainly the security, the drainage, uh, which, which basically is consolidated and then um, piped down to the oil-water separator on the facility and separately permitted under uh, a federal discharge permit will remain exactly as they, as they do today. Um, the waivers that were requested were discussed with the planning staff over a considerable period of time, and they all go, as Mr. Callahan said, to the point that the roadway that would be shown on the subdivision plan um, would actually not be constructed. There would not be a need for independent utilities, no stormwater connections, no sewer connections, water connections, and so on, so those were not, those were not really deemed necessary by the staff to to have provide. Similarly, given the, the, the actual size of the Citgo parcel, sixty-two acres, and how this particular portion of the site, which is, which is being used for creating lot B, is such a small piece, the staff recommended that we simply um, develop the topographic plan for the immediately proximate bit and not the end. Everybody is aware of the fact that the terminal fronts on Quincy Avenue and slopes down to the. With regard to the covenant that we submitted, and it is something that I actually spoke with uh, the uh, the Solicitor's Office, now Council Office, the last nine months or so, we are um, we simply submitted this as the fairly standard Massachusetts Planning Board subdivision covenant uh, that's used in instances like this where there's been, there are no current plans to actually build out the infrastructure as you might with a, with a subdivision which you intend to basically develop. Uh, and it simply says that um, lot B may never be independently sold uh, unless the entire terminal of lot A and B are sold. Um, but we otherwise would not be able to carve it off and sell it independently without either coming back to board or actually constructing the access that's provided on the plan. And I, I can assure you that that, that's really not our intent. That's the, the basic elements of that type of covenant which are used across the Commonwealth by planning boards is really all it's intended to do, it provides a measure of security so that no one sells the lot without achieving the performance requirements of the subdivision regulation. Um, I'm happy to answer any other questions that the board members may have, um, if you have any.
Let me ask the board, uh, we'll start out with member Grove, member Grove, any questions or comments?
I'm just wondering why this couldn't be accomplished through a contractual arrangement rather than subdividing and passing along.
Well, we do that already, to be honest with you, we do have terminalling agreements, we've had them for probably fifty years. Um, I think people appreciate the fact that the Braintree Terminal is, is located on the southern side of the metropolitan Boston area, and so what's common in managing terminals around the United States is that for geographic purposes, um, petroleum product, particularly gasolines, are, are contractually held either in a segregated fashion in a separate tank or as a, as basically commingled product and then sold, you know, measured and sold when there's, when they're, when they're distributed through the loading rack that's there. This is just one additional small step to create that separate lot. It would permit us, for example, to permit a long-term less C to be able to establish different types of security interests as opposed to the, what they can do now, which is, which is a little bit different. Um, it's really just an accommodation to provide us more flexibility more than anything else.
Thank you.
Member Baker, any questions?
Yeah, no real questions, I'm, you know, I'm kinda the same as uh, Robert Kearns of why, I, I understand the, the logistics of it, of trying to kinda carve out the lot to potentially lease it, but is there other opportunities, you know, not off of Quincy Ave, uh, through like the back road going to Beld to carve out a lot rather than, you know, carving it out off of Quincy Ave, that's my own kinda comment.
We, we looked at, we actually looked at a number of different configurations for the subdivision, and because, as I indicated, we did not want to create any issues with regret, with respect to non-conformities, we were not able to actually create um, a, a full legal, legal-sized lot without um, encountering setback limitations, this was really the only way that we could do it. Um, but we certainly examined, our engineers examined a number of different options. My recollection is that Potter Drive is not a public way that we'd be able to subdivide off uh, for any significant length at all. I think that Potter Drive is, um, although it's owned by the town, I don't think that it's listed as a public way after you get to the first gate there past the uh, right near the gas station at the corner.
Okay, and then the only other question is, as it stands right now, um, you know, with the actual whole scope of what they own, uh, they wouldn't be able to sell any sort of parcel, because everything is encompassed them together. So, hypothetically, if this wasn't approved, they would never be able to sell individual lots, because everything right now is just one large lot, so to speak.
Actually, it's more, it's actually more than one lot, if you take a look at the um, the lot, the lotting plan, you're gonna see that there's, there's several lots that the Citgo Terminal is comprised of. Um, two large lots, and then, as I indicated, there's lot eleven, which is also located on Quincy Avenue. I don't, unfortunately, the plan that Mr. Callahan has put up is probably a little bit difficult to read, but um, Joe, I don't know whether you have the ability to uh, share the screen on one of the other figures.
Um, let's see.
The, if you're familiar with the terminal. The, if you're familiar with the terminal, the loading rack, which is located on the northern side of the property, is a separate parcel than the balance of the terminal. But as I said, there's a couple, there's another parcel that's located, at least one other parcel, if not two parcels that Citgo also owns, that is on Quincy Avenue, but actually is historically an independent lot, a separate lot.
Yeah, yes. I think our, my only kind of feedback is that as a board, as Braintree Planning Board, is that we have to worry about not you, but the next guy. So that's, that's kind of the issue at hand is that if, if you subdivide this and get it approved, that if you always add it in the lot, I think it's A to B, and then you have two lots to potentially subdivide, someone potentially can come in, cut this road in right off of Quincy Ave, even though you're not going to do it, the next guy could do it. That's my only feedback, is just trying to weigh the options of, you know, whether it's good or bad or indifferent. So that's my only kind of comments.
I'm, I'm certainly happy to talk to the, to Council about this, if it, if board would, would like me to do that with, you know, with respect to the language and the covenant on that.
Got it. No more questions from me.
Member Downey, any questions or comments?
No, I don't have any questions or comments.
Member Comby, any questions or comments?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to pick up on what Member Baker is talking about. So, you know, hypothetically, we all drive electric cars. We don't need gasoline anymore. You take down all the tanks. So I just asked the attorney, so we have these covenants. We have all these things. I mean, I personally don't see this site being developed, but are protections strong enough? Covenant's strong enough so that we, we don't have to, we don't have to lose any sleep over it?
Yeah, I would, my response to that is that yes. I mean, the covenants can be drafted any number of ways to be able to give the, give the board greater assurances. With respect to the foreseeable future here, I certainly understand and respect the question about whether or not we all drive electric cars and gasoline may not be in as much demand. I would say and remind everyone that the terminal also basically manages and trends and, and is responsible for the management and distribution of a very substantial amount of home heating oil, which at least in the near future, I think people still expect they're going to require until we convert to some other fuel heating source. But, you know, certainly you never can say never with respect to the long-term uses of industrial property in any community. But at this point, the, the terminal remains extremely active as really the only significant operating petroleum facility. There's a small one, I think you are aware of Quincy, owned by Spray Petroleum. But the Citgo terminal is, it's been there since the 1920s, 1930s, in one form or another. It's the old city service terminal. And before that, there was actually a refinery after World War, at the end of World War I. So it's, it's been in this, this general category of use for over a century.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Member Joyce? Member Joyce?
I don't have any further questions or comments.
All right. You know, I, I kind of tend to understand Member Grove's concern and Member Baker's concern and Member Comby's concern. But at this point, other than, if there's anybody else out there to speak, is there right now?
Mr. Chairman, we do have two hands raised. May I forward them in?
Yes, please.
Okay. Mr. Lang, if you could please unmute so you could speak.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes. Well, I'm very sympathetic to your financial concerns and all that stuff. But I got to tell you, I'm 72 years old. I've spent the last 40 years trying to address environmental issues within the Four River Basin. And this last statement you made about it's been, it's been this way for so many years and blah, blah, blah. I've heard that too many times at these things. And most of the times I say, well, the place is a mess anyway, so what the hell? Let's build a nuclear waste dump or something here. That's why we have, we have to draw a line somewhere. And this is the line we're drawing. Right now, I spend virtually every week talking to people, regulators up in the state and the government, the federal government, all over the place just to keep places like Citgo, which, which serves a need, from expanding or getting larger because, you know, because we could use a few extra bucks, so let's make a little terminal here. I understand it, but at the same respect, the poor people, the residents around this area are environmentally getting beat up. And so, so I hope you understand what I'm doing here. Mr. Baker is right. You know, this is it. We got to draw the line. That roadway, I, I was on the planning board for a short time. And I understand if, if it's on your drawing, eventually somebody's going to come in and say, what the hell? It's on the drawing. I get to build it. And I'm afraid they'll come back and bite us. But that's my concern right there. And also, I get concerned about what else is going to be added in not only, not only Citgo, but the whole industrial area in the Four River Basin. Right now, we're, we're fighting. We have lawyers. We just spent $60,000, a neighborhood group, to fight some environmental things, just so people can breathe. So, so like I said, I understand your financial concerns, but frankly, I don't care, you know? So we're, we're trying to stop your expansion from going any further. And I really believe that you can do something with your plumbing to accomplish it. Yeah, maybe you won't get the legal status of a separate subdivision, but again, I don't care.
Mr. Chairman, if I can respond to that. Number one, I just want to make it very clear, this is not a facility expansion at all. There's no proposal to add any additional tanks. We're not, we're not doing anything physically to expand the capacity of the terminal or add anything else because of the creation of this separate lot. And second of all, and I think I indicated this, that we're exercising our lawful authority or lawful opportunities under, under General Law, Chapter 41, Section 81P, or under 81, to create a lawful subdivision under the Subdivision Control Act and under the ordinances of the bylaws and regulations of Braintree. And that's all we're really seeking to do tonight. This is not, a subdivision plan approval is not the form or the mechanism to regulate uses. And I'm very sympathetic to Mr. Kearns and Mr. Lang's comments. But all I can say is that the town has a lot of different regulatory, pieces of regulatory authority that they've exercised over the operations of the Citgo terminal over the last 50 years. They are not losing any of those regulatory programs by the action of the planning board that we're asking for tonight.
All right. Connor, thank you very much, Connor.
We have Robert Kearns, who is looking to speak. Robert. See if you might.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yep.
Yeah, so Ms. Arena wasn't able to speak, so I have some questions, a couple of questions from her. I think some of the concern from the community in the neighborhood comes from the fact that in the past, Citgo has subdivided and sold part of the terminal to Clean Harbors, who tried to put an incinerator on the other part of the property where they have their current facility for hazardous waste, which obviously the incinerator was never built, but there's definitely some community concern. And just want to put that out there. But the questions I have, which were addresses from Ms. Arena was, who is to propose leasing? And would Citgo, or who is responsible if something goes wrong with the tank? If it catches on fire or explodes, is Citgo responsible or the leasing?
Citgo is responsible for the operations of the terminal. It always has been. It always would be. Any, any terminalling agreements we have are, and there were the number of the major petroleum companies in the United States from time to time. That really doesn't change at all. I couldn't tell you today whether or not that particular tank is currently in the rotation to store someone else's technical ownership of a certain number of barrels of product. And frankly, because that does shift around and move around, it's really irrelevant. It's the Citgo terminal. Citgo operates the terminal. It owns the terminal. The ownership of the product is somewhat different, but Citgo is responsible under state, federal, and local regulation for the operation, safety, security, and control of the facility. None of that changes, but with the creation of a separate legal law under the subdivision control law, all of the operations of Citgo remain the same. Similarly, I'll just point out that I believe that the parcel that you're speaking of, that Clean Harbors acquired back in the, in the 1970s, I believe. You know, as I said, you know, in the 1950s, the town acquired another piece of this as well. Very, very heavily regulated activities. Citgo had nothing to do with what Clean Harbors had ever proposed to do with that, at that facility that they acquired.
I could add further to that question. If Citgo, if Citgo had nothing to do with it, but for the fact that it was subdivided, wasn't that, didn't that, didn't allow Clean Harbors then to purchase it or try?
Well, no, I just, to be quite honest with you, I actually represented the Town of Braintree when that whole thing was happening. And Clean Harbors had actually acquired that property, I think in the 70s. They proposed to build a hazardous waste treatment facility in the 1980s. But at the time Clean Harbors was operating, they were simply hauling flammable, flammable products and a number of other locations in eastern Massachusetts. They were handling hazardous waste and transporting it elsewhere. So it was just a business that was permitted under the industrial, you know, district bylaw.
No, 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 I know that. But my question is, how were they able to, who did they purchase that from?
Citgo didn't actually exist until 1982. I think they purchased it from the City Service Corporation.
Which subdivided it, so it was able to be purchased.
It might have been a separate lot. I don't know that it ever actually had to be subdivided. I frankly don't recall whether or not that was.
It would have been provided to buy a lot, right? I mean, it would have had to be subdivided for them to buy a lot.
It might have, I don't know whether Christine recalls this, but it, it may have been, as I indicated, we have, one of the parcels that the loading rack is on now is a separate legal lot. I believe the Clean Harbors property has got frontage on Columbia Terrace or one of those other roads in that area. So it might have, it might have actually met the requirements for, to be able to have a separate, you know, separate frontage on that lot, on that road.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, I believe Mike Lang still has his hand raised. Did you have any more questions, Mr. Lang?
Oh, no, I don't. I'm sorry. I didn't know.
It's okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Our recommendation is to continue this to the September 8th meeting. We hope, as I said earlier, we want to have the town solicitor review the covenant, provide us with some language, and we'll work with Attorney Leoni on that. We'll also have the staff recommendation, plus the town engineer's recommendation on the waiver request.
That sounds good. So, go ahead.
Sorry, Mr. Chairman, I just have one more thing to add. Mr. Kearns spoke for Ms. Alice Arena. I would like to note for the record that Ms. Alice Arena's address is 6 Blueberry Street, Waymouth.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
All right. So the chair will take a motion to continue this till September?
September 8th.
September 8th. Mr. Grove made the motion to a second.
Second.
Okay. Roll call vote, Member Grove?
Yes.
Member Comby?
Yes.
Member Baker?
Yes.
Member Downey?
Yes.
Member Joyce?
Yes.
And I agree. All right. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Good evening.
Mr. Chairman, we have finished the public hearings, but we do have some other business here. We have a as-built approval, release of surety for a grading permit filed 1808-128 Stetson Street.
There's no issues with that right now?
Let Connor speak to you on that.
Mr. Chairman, nope. So I've been working with the applicant before we were hit with the COVID pandemic that delayed their request for the as-built approval. I have conducted a couple of site visits. I've gone out. I've seen their property. It's built within the record plans. They did change a little bit of their side stairway, which they are allowed to do. In addition to that, they did plant, so one of their conditions were to plant seven native species. They have planted those species along one of their landscape beds. In addition to that, all conditions have been satisfied. I am recommending the following conditions to survive. Condition one, condition three, condition five, condition 12, condition 14A, condition 20, condition 23, condition 32, and condition 34. As well as vote to release the $1,000 in as-built charity.
All right. Any questions from the board? Okay, seeing none. Chair will take a motion.
Chairman, I'll move for a positive as-built approval and release the surety, surety for the grading permit, file number 18-08-128 Stetson Street.
With the surviving clauses?
Yes, thank you.
Is there a second on that?
Thank you.
Okay. Roll call vote, Member Grove?
Yes.
Member Comby?
Yes.
Member Baker? Okay, Baker, be better if you turn on your thing so we can hear you.
Yes.
Member Downey?
Yes.
Member Joyce?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have 201 Commerce, Mar Construction.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. With us tonight is the, one of the principals of Mar Scaffolding, Dan Mar, and his engineer, Carlos Skelty. I apologize. I always ruin his last name. As you know, they came before us a few years ago and built out the site at 201 Commerce Street, across from Channel Fish. They did a warehouse contractor's yard. It is done. There are a few items that we're still working through, but they are in the process of going for their full occupancy permit for financial reasons. And we are recommending favorable for that. We do have surety that we're holding on this. My recommendation is going to be to hold back $5,000 on this because of the landscaping. It's been a very tough summer. It's been, they just planted and with the drought, we really haven't given it time for maturity. So we're hoping to hold that until next spring and see how it does through the winter. But Carlos is here to answer any questions that the board may have about the project. But we are recommending a as-built approval with surviving conditions. And if you need those condition numbers, I can provide them.
Well, we can put them on the record without having to outline.
Hold on one second. Let me get them for you. So the conditions we're recommending that would be surviving conditions would be condition 29, 30, 32, 44, 46, 48, 51, 54, 55, 56, 57, 59, and 60.
Does the board have any questions?
No questions.
So, I'll take them out. Chair will accept the motion.
I'm sorry, I was muted. I was, I just asked one question. I was trying to be like Member Baker. Has the applicant moved in yet? And have we had any initial experience with traffic?
So the, yes, we gave them, they posted a bond for their temporary CO. If you recall, we also did a major modification on the fuel storage. And it was shortly after that that they posted the, the bond. And they got a temporary, so they have been, the site has been operational. And they are storing equipment and vehicles down there.
Okay. And I'm just, have we had any positive or negative impact on traffic? Have you heard anything?
We haven't received any complaints. It seems to be working fine.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, thank you very much.
Any other questions? Okay. Chair will take a motion?
Yeah, so a motion for favorable action on the as-built approval. And then the hold, I think it was on the five thousand dollar surety through the winter into the spring with conditions that Christine spoke about.
If we could, Mr. Baker, could we do one motion for the as-built with those surviving conditions?
Okay.
And then a separate vote on the surety.
Okay, so motion for favorable action for the as-built approval.
Okay, is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Okay, roll call vote, remember Grove?
Yes.
Remember McCamey?
Yes.
Remember Baker?
Yes.
Remember Downey?
Yes.
Remember Joyce? Okay, and I vote yes. All right, thank you.
And so the request, the second motion, if we may, would be for release of surety, but will retain, so the surety we're holding is the performance guarantee, that's usually condition four, and the for the occupancy permit, they have provided the as-built plans as required. So we're going to hold back five thousand dollars for the landscaping to make it through the winter and see what happens.
Okay, any questions for the board?
If I may, Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
This is, this is Dan Mar. I'm the CEO of the Ma Companies headquartered in Boston. And we're, I guess this is just a public way of me thanking you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, and Christine. It's been a pleasant experience in the, just one year that we've been operating, who have been actually facilitating the build-out in Braintree. And we as a company looking forward to a long relationship with, with our new satellite location in Braintree for many years to come. Thank you.
Thank you. So, is there a motion made?
Yes, there's a motion for the release of surety with a hold on the five thousand of a performance guarantee through the winter into the spring.
Is there a second? Okay, roll call vote, remember Grove?
Yes, sir.
Remember McCamey?
Yes.
Remember Baker?
Yes.
Remember Downey?
Yes.
Remember Joyce?
Yeah.
I also vote yes. Thank you. All right.
One last matter that we-
Correspondence from the mayor?
Well, yes, we have the, the public hearing that we had for the zoning bylaw, Town Council Order twenty forty-three. The mayor and the co-sponsor, Councilor Sasha, have requested it be allowed to be withdrawn.
I do have a memo from the mayor's office that on behalf of the mayor, I respectfully request to withdraw the zoning bylaw, text amendment TCO twenty zero forty-three for two primary conversion languages, section one thirty-five dash one oh two definitions, and one thirty-five dash six oh one use of table. Use table, geez, use table. Is there a motion to allow the withdrawal?
I'll move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, roll call vote, remember Grove?
Yes, sir.
Remember McCamey?
Yes.
Remember Baker?
Yes.
Remember Downey?
Yes.
Remember Joyce?
Yeah.
And I vote yes. All right.
And then we need to also go back and finish the zoning board petitions.
Yes. Connor, can you incite us with your petitions?
I'll try. So we already did petition twenty dash eleven and twenty dash twelve. Petition twenty dash thirteen sixty-four Parkside Avenue. Paul Cole, applicant for relief from bylaw requirements under chapter one thirty-five, four oh two, four oh three, and seven oh one for the construction of an eight-foot by sixteen-foot, one hundred twenty-eight square foot front porch with second-story dormers, a twenty-six point eight-three foot by twenty foot, five hundred thirty-six point six square feet, two-story addition, and an eight-foot by twenty-six foot, two hundred square foot deck. The applicant seeks a finding in order to construct the proposed two-story addition and deck by altering the non-conforming side yard setback from four point six feet to four point one feet, where ten feet is required in a residence B zone. The property is located at sixty-four Parkside Avenue, Braintree. Is zone residence B as shown on assess's map twenty dash twenty thirty-eight, plot twenty-seven, and contains a land area of seven thousand six hundred eighty-one square feet. Staff recommendation, the applicant is proposing to enlarge the existing single-family dwelling along a non-conforming side yard setback. In addition, the applicant is proposing to alter the non-conforming side yard setback from four point six feet to four point one feet with the proposed improvements. The applicant seeks a finding for the second-story addition over the non-conforming side yard setback and to alter the non-conforming side yard setback. Staff recommends favorable action on the petition as submitted.
Any questions? Is there, is there a motion?
Comment?
Absolutely.
I would raise a lot of opposition to a second story impact on the side yard setbacks because somebody's gonna complain like hell when they wanted up there to a second story and everybody staring into everybody's bedroom.
Yep. I understand that. Does anyone have any other comments? I'm going to go down the list. Remember Grove, we heard you. Remember McCamey? Any questions, comments?
I would, just to pick up on what Member Grove said, Connor, what are they aware that, is there, is there a possibility not to make it any more non-conforming? I know it ruins the size and what it looks like, but, you know, it is a legitimate concern.
So, let me, give me one second. Let me just pull up the site plan. Do you have any architecturals, Connor? Yes, I can pull them up, just one second. Give me one second, I'm going to share my screen. So as you can see, it's fairly tight already. We've been working with this applicant since December. The, originally they came to us, their driveway was non-conforming. They only had parking for one car and they, they're required to have two, two spaces. They increased some green space in the front. As you can see, the proposed dormers and the proposed porch is in the front. To your comment, Remember McCamey, they could keep within the four point six feet and go straight down. It's, it would be it would be a little in my opinion, I don't think it would be completely flush, as the house itself is somewhat angled on the lot. It's not, it's not straight with the lot. They could shrink it down to four point six feet, but it would be a little, little skewed.
To the chair?
Yes.
And this addition be put on the other side of the house, Connor? Or centered on the house?
Centered on the house.
Or on the other side?
Well-
I mean, you've got a greater span on the other side.
They're at, they're at ten point four for a side setback already, sir, and the requirement's ten. So they could bump it out more on the side if they wanted. But this is, this is the proposal they came with.
Yep, okay.
Remember Baker, would you like the architecturals as well?
Yeah, I'm actually looking at them on my computer right now. So essentially, the, the garage and the breezeway are being taken down, and then you're rebuilding a structure on the right-hand side.
Correct, yep.
It loops around the back to do, you know, an addition.
Correct, yep.
You know, it's one thing to extend the non-conformity, it's another thing to increase it. And with the addition, looking at it, easy enough to take a foot out of this and make it better than what it is currently, so you know, there's, there's easy ways to go around that. Just looking at the architecturals, they have plenty of room. It's into a sitting room and kitchen and mudroom space. So there's definitely flexibility there architecturally, and they have to know, and so this is more of a building code standard, but since they're under five feet, it's twenty percent of glass, which I think they have, and it's a one-hour firewall. So that's something to be considered. Anything under five feet is, is a firewall because you're so close to your neighbor. So that's something to consider. If they can get it over five feet, they can have as much glass as they want, and it wouldn't be a firewall, which, you know, makes it a little bit nicer for a neighborhood. It's just a different shingle pattern, essentially. You know, I'd be more prone to tell them to cut out a foot or six inches to get it to be over five feet. That's, that's a, a better proposal in my, my eyes.
Okay.
No more questions for me.
Remember Downey, any questions?
No.
Remember Joyce, any questions?
I do have a question. On the application that they submitted for the DVA, to the DVA, they're not, so they're not requesting a variance or anything? They're just requesting a finding, is that right?
Correct, Erin, yes.
Okay.
But wouldn't they have to request a variance because they're increasing the non-conformity?
No. It's already non-conforming. So when you have an existing non-conformity, you're allowed to alter the non-conformity. Granted, you receive a finding from the zoning board of appeals that altering the non-conformity is not more substantial, not is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than what currently exists.
Got it.
Connor, if the non-conformity is increased, they don't require?
No, we have, there's been case law that has shown in Supreme Court's rule that you end up finding. I don't agree with it either, but that's, that's how I've been advised.
Got it.
Mr. Grove, I was, it's taken me a long time because that used to be the case, and now the court cases have come back the other way. So there was a time we used to do it like that.
Do we know, was that, has the garage existed for a while?
That, I do not have any information on. I can look through the building permits at a later date, but I give me one second. I can probably, I can give you a tenure.
Yeah, usually Parkside's an older community. They, they, that was probably existing, and since it's so small, no one would have built a ten-foot wide garage nowadays. It's pretty tight.
Let's see a parcel.
Sixty-four.
Yeah. So this is the aerial view. You can see right here at sixty-four Parkside. This is the aerial view of two thousand nineteen, and if I go ten years back, it's been there for more than ten years, so. This state statute, it's given a non-conforming protection.
Yeah, I think for, for me, I would, you know, I'd be favorable if they were, you know, maintaining the four point six, not making it worse, or getting to five. That's, that's my recommendation.
Okay.
Connor, doesn't it look like they labeled the existing setback at the rear of the existing house that could actually end up being closer than? I guess they should just double-check that existing setback, because if the house is skewed, it might be technically closer, the existing than the four point six at the front.
Are you alluding to the rear yard setback?
No, the side yard setback. It looks like the existing side yard setback is only labeled at the front corner of the house.
It's labeled again in the middle at four point six. Oh, I know what you're saying, not the, not at the porch level, but at the existing. I see. Give me one second.
Yeah, I know what you mean, Erin, yep.
I don't have an exact measurement using a scale, but that's something I can check with the surveyor if you want me to.
I would say if our recommendation was, well, if you were going to adjust the recommendation at all, instead of putting a number to it, just have it read potentially that our recommendation is to not encroach further onto that side yard and to keep it as existing. But I don't know, maybe four point six or something different.
So you would like the applicant to, to maintain, you'd like the applicant to extend the existing non-conformity rather than create a new non-conformity? Is that what I'm understanding? Or intensify the non, because in, in theory, they are intensifying the non-conformity by creating the addition, by going further back, they're intensifying that, that non-conforming side yard setback. Even if they were to keep it the same distance from the side, they're still intensifying it by continuing it along the sidewalk line.
Right.
So
So, yeah, I think, I mean, it sounds like maybe that's where some of the other members are also heading. I mean, ultimately, the DVA will take into consideration our thoughts, but ultimately decide. So I think that's a worthwhile recommendation.
Okay.
Can someone put that into a motion for Connor?
I'll make a motion to make a favor, go with the staff recommendation for sixty-four Parkside Avenue with the comment that planning board recommends that the side yard encroachment is not made worse and maintains the existing side yard setback.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call vote, remember Grove?
No.
Remember McCamey?
Yes.
Remember Joyce?
Yeah.
Remember Baker?
Yes.
Remember Downey?
Yes.
Yourself. All right. Connor, the next matter?
Petition twenty dash fourteen, sixteen Myrtle Street. I'm going to butcher this name, but Andrej Kluziak, applicant for relief from bylaw requirements in the chapter one thirty-five, four oh seven, and one thirty-five, seven oh one. Constructed twenty-four foot by twenty-six foot, six hundred twenty-four square foot garage to the single-family dwelling. The applicant seeks a variance as the proposed addition will have a side yard setback of seven point eight feet, and ten feet is required. The property is located at sixteen Myrtle Street, Braintree, MA oh twenty-four. The zone residence B as shown on assess's map, two thousand one, plot eight B, and contains a land area of nine thousand one hundred seventy-seven square feet. Staff recommendation, the applicant has yet to present a reasonable hardship pursuant with the one thirty-five, four oh seven of the Braintree zoning bylaw in chapter forty-eight, section ten. Staff recommends denial.
All right. Remember Grove, any questions, comments?
Yes, sir.
Oh, sir.
Okay, I'm sorry. McCamey, questions, comments?
Uh, no, no, thank you.
Remember Baker, questions or comments?
Uh, yeah, I, I agree with Connor. Easy as it is, just they can cut out two or three feet out of the garage width and they can conform. So the garage would still work, so I would, I would deny as well.
Remember Downey, questions, comments?
No, I've no.
Remember Joyce, questions or comments?
No, no question or comment.
I have none either, so Chair, will take a motion?
Uh, motion to move forward, um, with our ZBA recommendation for sixteen Myrtle Street, with staff recommendations for denial of this variance application.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call vote. Member Grove?
Yes, sir.
Uh, Member Kami?
Uh, yes.
Member Baker?
Yes.
Member Downey?
Yes.
Member Joyce?
Yes.
And myself. All right. Thank you, Connor. Anything else?
Uh, I have a couple more. Petition twenty dash fifteen, twenty-six Gale Avenue. Eddie Mye, applicant for relief from bylaw requirements under chapter one thirty-five four oh two, one thirty-five four oh three, and one thirty-five seven oh one, to extend the rear deck attached to the single family dwelling. The applicant seeks a finding to alter the nonconforming rear yard setback from thirteen point six to ten point two feet, where thirty feet is required. The property is located at twenty-six Gale Avenue, Braintree MA oh two one eight four, in the zone residence B, as shown on assesses map, uh, blah, 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 twenty forty-one plot six, and contains a land area of fifteen thousand seven hundred sixty-seven square feet. Staff recommendation, the applicant is proposing to extend the rear deck and alter the nonconformity setback of thirteen point six feet to ten point two feet. Staff is of the opinion this request is minor and does not alter the character of the deck in relation to the neighborhood. Staff recommends favorable action for the relief requested. Staff would like to know a couple of things. Um, one, this person did receive a building permit from the building division to construct this deck circa nineteen eighty. When looking at the zoning bylaw, that building permit was probably issued incorrectly. There, however, it's over ten years. So we've been advised by council to perceive this as a finding, um, to alter the nonconforming, uh, setback. In addition to that, um, this is somewhat of a corner lot. It's on a bulb, cul-de-sac bulb. Therefore, in theory, it has two front yards. It has the front yard to the cul-de-sac bulb, and has the front yard to Rita Road. The, does have an elongated side yard setback as it fronts on Gale Ave. It does not front on Rita Road. Um, those are the only notes I had, other than that.
Okay. Uh, from the board, any questions? Member Grove?
Uh, Connor, do you have any drawings?
Yes, give me one second, sir.
Thank you. So the only question I have, Connor, is that the, the bottom portion, uh, where it says proposed deck expansion, that's a hundred twenty-five feet, almost a hundred twenty-six, so we're considering that the rear lot line? Because it looks like it's almost a side yard, yard setback.
So, so the way corner lots read under seven oh nine, I believe, I could be wrong. Basically, when, when you're on a corner lot, and you have two streets like this?
Yep.
You have two front yard setbacks. And then when you look at the rare lot line definition within the bylaw, it specifically states, um, I can pull up the definition for you, but to paraphrase, the street you front on, the rare setback is opposite of that. So the rare setback's opposite of, of Gale, which is right here, if you see my cursor, making this the rear yard, and then this, a side yard setback. It's funky, I know.
No, it is. That's, you know, that's, I, I'd be favorable to this because it's kind of a funky lot, the way it's cited, and they always can do an address change to Rita, and then they would have it as a side yard, technically, you know, so, yeah, right, right. No more comments from me.
Anybody else? Chair, will take a motion?
Motion to move forward with staff recommendations for twenty-six Gale Avenue.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Roll call vote. Member Grove?
Yes, sir.
Member Kami?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Member Downey?
Yes.
Member Joyce? And myself. All right. Uh, Connor?
Petition twenty dash sixteen, thirty Torrey Road. Daniel Cody, applicant for relief from bylaw requirements in the chapter one thirty-five four oh two, one thirty-five four oh three, one thirty-five six oh nine, and one thirty-five seven oh one, to construct a twenty foot by thirty foot, six hundred square foot, single story addition, a ten foot by twenty foot porch, and a twenty-three point five eight feet by twenty-four feet attached garage. The applicant seeks a finding to alter the nonconforming side yard setback from four point five feet down to two feet. The property is located at thirty Torrey Road, Braintree MA oh, oh two one eight four, in the zone residence B, as shown on assesses map, ten sixty-two plot one thirty-seven, and contains a land area of eight thousand two hundred and fifty-eight square feet. Staff recommendation, the applicant is proposing substantial addition to the existing single family dwelling. The proposed addition is to the rear, is one story. To propose attached garage, attached garage is larger than the existing detached garage, which they are proposing to demolish. Staff would like to note that the applicant submitted fourteen signatures of support for the proposed project. Staff recommends favorable action application as submitted. I can pull up the plans if you would like. One second, please. I'm going to show existing first. So as you can see, the applicant has an existing single family dwelling here. They have their driveway, existing covered porch, and existing deck. There is an existing detached garage here, um, with a two foot setback just right about here. The applicant is proposing to demolish the existing garage here, and the existing deck. Let me go to the proposed. So the applicant is proposing to alter the nonconforming side yard setback down from uh, four point seven, four point five, all the way down to four point three. They're also proposing to attach the garage to the dwelling itself. When you attach the garage to the dwelling, it loses its accessory, I guess, label. It then becomes a part of the main dwelling, and is subject to the ten foot side yard setback. Um, the way I've been advised is they're altering a nonconforming side yard setbacks, which requires the finding. However, the side yard setback is looked as almost one, because they're already nonconforming on one side. I- in theory, they're not conforming in general. So I've been advised that it would be a finding, although they are going to two feet here on the, on the right-hand portion of the side yard setback. I would like to note that the existing accessory garage, uh, does have a similar setback.
Okay. Questions, uh, going down the list. Member Grove?
No, just a comment. Uh, I think it's awfully tight.
Yeah, me too. Uh, Member McCamey?
Connor, is that a two car, two car garage?
Um, let me pull up the architecturals, sir, in a second. I believe it's a two.
Close to twenty-four by twenty-four.
Yeah, it's a two car garage. Yep, two bays, stairs that lead up to the main dwelling.
Yeah, it's awfully tight.
Yeah. Yep, two bay garage here.
It is awfully tight.
Mm-hmm. I would like to note, there is an existing shed here at the bottom portion of the lot. The applicant has submitted a letter stating they are removing the shed, and will be placing it five feet offset from the side in the rear lot line, which would make it compliant with zoning.
Yeah, I just think that this proposal opens up a corner worms, um, for the zoning board and, and kind of Preston setting forth, because every garage in Braintree, as you know, they're, they're tucked really tight to their property line, every existing garage.
Right.
Once you start to say, hey, you can rebuild it and maintain an existing accessory dwelling of a garage, like a substructure, it's, you know, you're kind of open a can of worms to approve this, or say, hey, you can do it. I, you know, I'd be okay if the garage was one car, and it would be either the ten feet, or, you know, a couple of feet, you know, but two and a half is, is kind of crazy. It's really tight over there. It just doesn't really make sense. Uh, just because you have it there existing doesn't mean you can use it, uh, since it is detached, so.
Mm-hmm.
I don't really, I'm not favorable on this one, it's because it just doesn't make sense for.
Phil, how much, uh, space could they save if they had a, a, a single, uh, door on the garage?
It looks like they have an existing single car garage, for the record.
I know, but if they have a single door for, for both cars?
If they do a single door, um, you could, right now, it's like a twenty-four foot or a twenty-three and a half foot proposed garage.
Mm-hmm.
Take three and a half feet out of that and make it a twenty, and do a sixteen foot door with two feet on each side, but then their stairs came into play, uh, to get into the house, since there's a decent grade change there. They have a, a proposed staircase in the upper left-hand corner. Um, so I think that it's either you do a sixteen foot door, or you go to like a fourteen or a twelve, and it's kind of really a glorified one car garage.
Right, okay.
Yeah, it's, it's just really tou- I just, I, you know, my, my garage is probably a foot on my property line, and, you know, I, I would love to connect it, but I know I would, I would never want to get it approved, so.
Well, the, you know, the, I did discuss this with the applicant, and they said, well, if I wasn't gonna do a proposed garage, I'd almost leave my existing, and that would just create such a narrow hallway, almost, leading into your backyard.
Right, and, and any, any structure, to structure, you have to be ten feet away as well, so if they left that garage, they have to be ten feet by building code, so if they're only eight, then they have to make that proposed addition, you know, a foot or two smaller, just, just for reference.
Okay, thank you. I didn't know that.
Member Baker, any questions?
No, that's it.
Member Downey? Member Joyce?
Um, my question is related to proposed grading. It looks like there's a couple retaining walls in the rear of the parcel. Is there any, has there been any discussion about what would be done from a grading perspective with the addition of the garage? Because right now, it looks like water runs down the driveway into the backyard, and they're going to be effectively cutting that off with the construction of the garage and attaching it to the house.
Okay.
So, um, I don't know if they're planning on reworking the rear of the house, and then also depending on the amount of grading that they're proposing, I don't know if that would trigger any other permitting, um, like a grading permit or anything, but, um, yeah, I would be curious what they're planning for the rear with those walls.
So those are existing walls?
Are they planning to do anything with them? I know they're.
To my knowledge, no. Uh, they, they haven't reached out in regards to anything with stormwater. And to be honest, um, that's, that's something I would let Cynthia O'Connell, the stormwater division tackle, through the building permit division. When you file for a building permit in the town of Braintree, Cynthia reviews it, and she determines whether or not it triggers the stormwater bylaw. But, uh, to your question, no, there's been no contact in regards to stormwater.
I think we could put in, just advise the applicant that they should look into that, because there might be some issues with stormwater. Um, would that be agreeable, Member Joyce?
Yep.
Okay.
Oh, so what is the staff recommendation on this one, Connor? What are you guys proposing?
Was that, I'm sorry, I missed.
So, what's the staff recommendation, uh, Connor?
Staff, staff recommendation is favorable action. I mean, they have fourteen signatures of support from the entire neighborhood, uh, number one. Number two, it is a finding. Um, if the zoning board determines that what they're doing is substantially more detrimental than the neighborhood than what currently exists, um, then that's.
Wouldn't, wouldn't the new garage encroachment require more than a finding?
No. Because they're already nonconforming on one side yard, and it's looked at as.
That's one side yard, but this is a new.
Right, right, no.
Attached to the building.
So I, I had the same questions, and I said, isn't that a variance? And I was told, because our bylaws only give one side yard setback. It's not like it's split in the dimensional table. Left side yard setback, right side yard setback. It gives one side yard setback. So if they're already nonconforming on a side yard setback, it's a finding for the other one as well, unfortunately.
And the side yard setback applies the same whether it's a house, or it's an accessory structure?
No, I, so.
Who, who gave you the opinion, Connor?
When I was discussing with Melissa, though.
Okay.
They're already nonconforming on a side yard setback. That's, that's how I've been advised, because I stated it needed a variance, and I was told no.
But, Connor, can you just follow up on the difference between the side yard setback for the main building and an accessory building?
So, an accessory structure is not the main dwelling. It's not a single family dwelling. It's not applicable to one thirty-five seven oh one, which is the table of dement, density and dimensional regulations. It, it has its own required setbacks in seven oh one notes, as well as other portions of the bylaw. It doesn't get the same protections of the original side yard setback. The point I'm trying to make is, they were already nonconforming on the left-hand side yard setback, at four point five feet. Since they were already nonconforming there, that also applies to the other side yard setback.
Ruben, Chair?
Yes.
Would it be possible to have Connor pass this by legal? That.
Absolutely.
It'd be, it bothers me.
Steve, if I can, Mr. Chairman, what, what Connor's trying to explain, and maybe, is if that was not connected to the house, the setback would be five feet in accessory garage. But the minute it gets connected, it has to meet the ten feet. But because it's nonconforming on the regerio side of the property, that's why it's a finding, too.
But I'm just asking to have some clearance through legal counsel, because that makes no sense that you grant it on one side, and that you automatically get it on the other.
Well, you're getting a finding.
If you grant a variance on one side, or if you have a, a minimal dimension on one side, that it automatically applies to the other. That, I'm sorry, I just.
Yeah, it is, I, I understand what Member Grove is saying, is in, and, on one side, just because you have a nonconforming on one side, it doesn't automatically reduce it down to a finding for nonconformity on the other side, does it?
Right, that's, that's all I, yeah, I don't believe.
That's how we've been into, you know, we've been advised to do it, but we'll be glad to go to the solicitor and get an, an opinion.
So if, if we go to the solicitor for an opinion, you're not gonna, if this goes to the ZBA, depending on whatever action it is, you might not even know what, so are you gonna ask that they just continue this at the next meeting?
Well, Connor, that, that's, you, you, that's up to them. They can go forward.
Okay.
I think we should get a legal opinion for at least the future, because it does not make sense that you're nonconforming on one side, which means you just, it drops dramatically by just a finding on the other side.
So I think what Connor needs is some, some clear direction, as far as what you want to recommend if the solicitor doesn't come back between now.
Yep.
No matter what the recommendation, I would suggest that Connor make, uh, the ZBA aware that something before counsel.
Yeah. I, I mean, we, we don't make a recommendation, they're gonna act anyways. So we just advise them that we're seeking, uh, the town solicitor to give us an opinion of it, on it. They can decide to go forward and, or, or continue themselves based, wait for the opinion, right?
If you give them a, if you advise them that you're getting a town solicitor's opinion on it, you've given them a recommendation, and they don't have to abide by the bylaw that says you gave no recommendation. You know, we still have that provision in there, even though we haven't used it, that we're supposed to have a planning board recommendation. Just the act of asking the town solicitor. used it, that we're supposed to have a planning board recommendation. Just the act of asking the town solicitor is a recommendation.
Oh, that'd be the recommendation.
Okay.
You know, I mean, what's the board say? I mean, I'm not making the decision. The board has to vote on the decision.
You know, this this could have been addressed, you know, in the the zoning rewrite, conference of rewrite, but, you know.
Let's not go down that road.
I'm just, I'm just saying, just just as a point of clarification, so.
Yep.
It would have, it would have been addressed, so.
It would have been.
Yep.
Connor, do you have the town GIS for this site that you could pull up? I'm just curious what surrounding structures are.
That's not right. Is that it?
30 Torrey?
Yes.
Doesn't look right.
That looks right.
That looks right. That structure wasn't, the structure in the back wasn't there when I was.
Do you still have the 209 on or the 2019?
I have the 2019.
Okay. That could be one of those pop up skating rinks.
To be honest, probably could.
Thank you for pulling that up.
So was that a motion to seek the town solicitors?
Well, I'm not sure if there was a motion yet. Is that a motion?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I I'd seek his advice, but my own thing would be for denial based upon the current way it's designed personally.
Well, we can have two. You know, we can, a motion for the council and you can then propose a separate denial.
Yep. Can we make two motions?
One motion to seek county from council.
Well, if I, this is just my opinion, if we make a motion to deny, they're gonna, if there's a motion to deny, right?
Yep.
I don't know. It's Phil made that, sure.
Oh, okay. Then right now on the table is a motion to to send the send the town council. Is there a second on that motion?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion on that motion? Okay, roll call vote. Member Grove?
Yes.
Member Kami?
Yes.
Member Baker?
Yes.
Member Downey? Member Downey?
Yes.
Member Joyce?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yeah, I can now. Yeah. Member Joyce?
Yeah.
Okay, I wrote yes. All right. Now, if if this motion alone, I think, will trigger the zoning board to look at it and say, what's the issue?
Well, I think my my take is is that right now Connor has a motion to approve with staff recommendations, but I I don't, I don't want to go on with the way it's currently thought about. So it's 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 neither, I guess you're you're right, Bob. It's if you're pushing them towards the the select or the town council, then they can know that we're not in favor of it. I'm just trying to get some guidance as well, so.
Well, well, let me answer from the clarification on this then. Connor, you have a recommendation, right?
My, yes, I have a staff recommendation, yes.
But that recommendation, it only goes forward if we approve it to go forward, right?
Yep, and you've, you can, you.
So if we don't approve it at all and we don't vote, that recommendation is right now nonexistent.
Correct.
Okay, so they won't get the staff report of your recommendation unless the board votes to move it forward.
So when I do a staff report for the zoning board, they receive, the planning board voted to either, in the past, it was we endorse the staff recommendation. So the planning board voted to endorse the staff recommendation. In my staff report, it's going to show the planning board voted upon a motion seconded by roll call vote to seek opinion from town solicitor. That would be in my staff report and then it would be the staff recommendation.
Okay.
I only give the staff recommendation because in the past the planning board has relied on the staff recommendation.
Yeah.
So if that wants to change in the future, that's.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, my concern is, say hypothetically speaking, there is a, the the staff has a recommendation.
Okay.
But the board, the board votes not to go with the board with the staff recommendation. Does the zoning board still get the staff recommendation?
Yes.
Well, then wouldn't that be a conflict there at that point?
How so? The planning board, because the planning.
We approve.
Go ahead, sorry.
Wouldn't we be the ones that would given voting yes or no to the staff recommendation or because now we could have actually three different entities making a decision, right?
If I, if I may, Mr. Chairman, so the staff, the staff is as they are, let me back up. The department services the zoning board as we service you, the planning board.
Yeah.
So.
Okay, all right, all right.
So he is staff, just like I am, just like Melissa is. We're all staff to that board as well.
Oh, okay, all right.
He'll be putting that forward, but he will note that your recommendation is not that.
Yeah, okay, that kind of answers my question because you're 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 giving the zoning board, you're their staff as well.
Yeah, before the zoning board was not underneath us, we weren't staff to them.
Yeah.
That changed.
Okay, so upon that, so it doesn't matter. Okay, that's fine. That's that. I didn't know that, so that's why I wanted to check. All right. So is that the vote then?
Can I just ask one quick question?
Sure.
Connor, are they having, do they have any wetlands permitting that they have to do? Do they have any wetlands in the vicinity of their rear lot line?
Not within the lot itself. There are wetlands to the south of the lot. I did press on that they would have to contact Kelly Phalen, our conservation planner, and I believe she said they weren't within proximity for or no, she said they had to file a, I'm sorry, they they didn't have to file a notice of intent, but they did have to file an RDA. Determination of applicability. I mean, a DOA, I'm sorry. Determination of applicability with this.
An RDA?
A DOA, determination of a same thing, I don't know.
Yeah. And just to make it even more difficult, it's now called an ANRAD. What it does is it establishes the wetland line. And then from that, you can determine if they'll have jurisdiction.
All right. So that, so the votes are finalized.
Okay.
All right.
Last one.
And just before you start, I have to step down on this next one, Howie Road.
Yep.
Thank you.
Petition 20-1739, Howie Road. Stephanie B. Snow, applicant for relief from bylaw requirements under 135 402, 403, and 701 for the installation of a seven foot by five foot, 35 square foot roof over the existing porch and a 13 foot by six foot second story addition. The applicant seeks a finding as the proposed roof would be constructed over a nonconforming front yard setback of 15.65 feet where 20 feet is required. And the proposed second story addition would be constructed over the nonconforming side yard setback of 5.5 feet, 10 feet is required. The property is located at 39 Howie Road, Braintree MA 024, and Zone Residence B, as shown on Sess's map. 2061 Plot 8 contains a land area of 7,817 square feet. I would like to note, so the applicant originally received relief on 2016 as part of ZBA decision 16-39. They were granted approval for a finding to construct a second story addition over a nonconforming side yard setback. The applicant then filed for a building permit. They were issued a building permit. And when constructing, they determined they wanted to square off the house a little bit more. Immediately, they were issued a stop work order by the building department. And the improvements which had already been constructed, they submitted a new application in 2017 under decision number 1717. And that application was actually denied. So this is somewhat of a repetitive petition. The only new thing would be the roof over the existing stairs that's proposed. I do not have a formal recommendation on this petition. Therefore, if the planning board would either like to provide no recommendation or have their own, I would encourage that.
Who is the board on this?
Connor, do you have any, John?
Yes, one second. The proposed second floor addition is right here in the front. And then the proposed porch is right here. With the roof to the porch, I should say. Let me know if you want the architecturals as well.
So Connor, you said some of this is already constructed?
Oh, so in 2006, I'll start over. In 2016, they received a finding from the zoning board of appeals to construct a two story addition. When they constructed the two story addition, they left some room in the front portion along the existing garage, if you see my cursor here. This dashed area, they constructed freelance on their own without any approvals. Upon inspection by the building inspector and at the time zoning administrator, they determined that they had exceeded what they were allowed. They went and filed again in 2017 under decision 17-17 and were denied. And now they've come back in order to reconstruct this and seek the proper approvals. So it is a repetitive, somewhat a repetitive petition.
Is that current? They never built it or they?
They 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 built it and then they were forced to take it down because they were denied.
Is the second floor addition on top of the existing garage, Connor?
Currently, yes.
What would you guys like to do before tomorrow comes?
I personally don't have a recommendation either way. I don't I don't feel strongly about them being able to do it or not being able to do it personally.
So the board, what does the board want to do?
I think Connor had said he didn't have a recommendation yet, so he's looking for us.
So let's tell the applicant we need more more information before we can make a decision?
What kind of more information, Mr. Chairman?
I don't know. Enough for you to make, give an, give a recommendation, I guess.
I'm, sir, the reason I'm not giving a recommendation is because it's a repetitive petition. I don't.
Can we just, can we issue the same recommendation as before?
You can send a recommendation of no recommendation and that's considered something. And that may be what you should do in this case because they have been before the board and the board has really been torn with all the activities that went on around the last time they gave them a decision. That may be the the most, you know, best way to go forward.
So I'll make a motion that we make no recommendation for 39 Howie Road.
All right. Is there a second on that?
Second.
Okay, roll call vote. Member Grove? Okay, Member McCauley?
Yes.
Member Baker?
He's off.
Member Downey?
Yes.
Member Joyce?
Yeah.
And myself, yes. We were missing Member Grove and Member Baker.
Well, make a, Member Baker's not participating. Is Member Grove abstaining or did he?
I don't know if he's on the call anymore.
See him there anymore.
I don't know. Did we lose him?
I don't see him.
I don't see him.
Yeah.
All right, we'll do it as 4-0.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, if I may take this opportunity, I know some members, we are trying to cut down on the amount of paper, so all of the applications are being posted on the website. And we really would encourage people to take a look at them beforehand. Connor can provide that, but we've spent quite a bit of time tonight on these zoning board recommendations and I know we were trying to get that more expedited, so I just want to remind everyone that they're up on on the website.
All right. All right, that's it?
I believe so. Connie, do you have anything else? No, I think that's it. So our next meeting is September 8th.
Do we approve the minutes?
I don't believe we have them, Jim.
I didn't have any. I didn't get it.
We're still working on them. Just a reminder, the 8th is right after Labor Day, so the office will be closed that Monday. We will try to get you in all your materials early before the weekend, so you can have them.
Thank you. Connor, thank you for exhilarating zoning reports.
You're welcome.
All right, so Chair will take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Roll call, vote. Member Grove, Member Kami, Member Joyce? Member Downey, Member Baker?
Yes.
All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, everyone.
Bye-bye.
Good night.
Good night.